The September 11th Board Meeting to Order. Thank you for coming tonight. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. The Wichita Public Schools will be the district of choice in our region where all students and staff are empowered to dream, believe, and achieve. We do have our colors presented tonight by the Pleasant Valley Middle School JRTC, First Class Julian Chavez, Sergeant First Class Alicia Supant, Corporal Isabella Ramirez, and Private Yuratsi Aguilar. Would you please rise for the presentation of the colors?
Up, up, hands up. Forward, march. Colors, up. Left, face. Present, colors. Ma'am, present the relevant school color card. Questions and answers, post colors, ma'am.
You may post the colors.
Thank you, ma'am. Order, march. Post, colors. Have left, face. Present, march. Ladies and gentlemen, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, march. Have left, face, post. Right, face. Forward, march.
Thank you, JRTC Middle School Pleasant Valley. You did, they did a great job. They worry and stew, but they always come off and shine. Great job. First order of business, please, Patrick.
First item under Reports, Good News. Oh, sorry. First item is Superintendent's Student Advisory Council.
Welcome, ladies. I heard good things about your first meeting.
My name is Marissa Sparza, and I am a senior at North High School.
Hello, my name is Maha. I go to Heights High School, I'm also a senior.
Last Wednesday, we had our first Super SAC meeting of the school year, and the topic we discussed was what topics we wanted to continue from last year, as well as new topics we wanted to talk about this year. As a Super SAC team, what we decided that we wanted to continue for this year, we're talking about safety within the school, recruitment, as well as graduation requirements. On the topic of graduation requirements, we wanted to focus not so much on making it easier, but adding and adjusting requirements so all students from all backgrounds can attain to the requirements. On the topic of recruitment, we thought the transition from middle school to high school needed support with introducing clubs, programs, as well as the classes that the high school level has to offer. Last year, we focused on metal detectors within school safety. And us as Super SAC kids, we thought that was very beneficial to the part of school safety, but this year, we felt like we wanted to focus more on the communication aspect. We also felt like the district has many resources that, to offer, but we felt like we are unachieving in the aspect of sharing those resources that the school has to offer, like Speak Up, suicide hotlines, and drug awareness.
Looking towards the future, we hope to proceed with creating new productive advancements to ensure that students at Wichita Public School achieving the higher standards that we want. Despite Spanish being primarily offered throughout our district, we hope to discuss on offering more language and culture classes to students, making clubs and opportunities more attainable to be a part of, reinstating driver ed classes as it is a crucial part of pre- and post-graduation, as well as for the rest of our lives, impact of mobility on academics, and overall building our schools to consist of more pride, spirit, and networking opportunities as we attempt to make more options feasible and accessible for all. Our overall goal is to prepare our students for life post-graduation while making the experience enjoyable for all, which is why we also have been discussing music exceptions to cell phone policy and expanding social media through Instagram with a greater emphasis on the students. Lastly, how we could also start receiving honorary diplomas outside of IB, such as honors and AP diplomas, starting this year along with switching valedictorian and salatorian to be weighted for the class of 2024 rather than upcoming classes. This has been a crucial debate for WPS students of this class that are wanting to stand up to colleges, especially now during the college application season. Thank you. If you guys have any questions, please proceed now.
I'm not seeing any, but you all have your work cut out for you this year. This is good. We really look forward to hearing from you again.
Thank you so much.
Because we want to hear from our students, and you all are great at bringing up good ideas and then bringing solutions, not just problems, to us. So, thank you.
Thank you for listening. We hope to see you guys next month.
Very good. Thank you. Next item?
Next item under Reports is Good News.
My apologies. I jumped forward a little too early and might have thrown things off. I am Wendy Johnson, Director of Strategic Communications for the Wichita Public Schools. It is always an honor to bring forward good news items to you, and we're really going to be focusing diligently this year to bring student-oriented good news items to you, whether they are students specifically or, in tonight's case, the individuals that help students achieve amazing things. So, Dr. Hatfield is here this evening to introduce you to the team at Chester Lewis Academy and the three alternative programs that operate out of that facility that help all of our students, including those that may not find their niche in a conference of high school, help all of our students find success. And as I see Ms. Crable, and I know you have a fondness in your heart for programs such as this, it's terrific that we get to start our year by celebrating graduation and the creativity of the educators at Chester Lewis, and they're here to tell you more about the programs that they bring forward to our students. So, without further ado, Dr. Hatfield will introduce the team.
Good evening, everyone. Chester Lewis, if your whole team would just come on down, because the camera can't see you when you're back there, and we want to see you. So, if you would just start lining up right here, don't hide under the dark cove. Be out here in the lights. You can wrap around that direction. They're nice people, I promise. You can go stand by them. All right. This is not the entirety of the Chester Lewis staff, but it is a nice portion of them, I will say. So, it is my privilege this evening to share some data to celebrate the work being done by the staff and students of Chester Lewis Academic Learning Center. And just so we're clear, Chester Lewis Academic Learning Center is an umbrella term that houses multiple alternative programs. There's the actual alternative school at Chester Lewis, there's the Town East Learning Center, and there's the Transitions Learning Center. So, all of that is housed underneath the Chester Lewis umbrella. Let me get to my spot. Later this evening, we're going to share graduation data, and honoring Chester Lewis on the night we discuss graduation rate is quite apropos. It can be easy to judge an alternative school based on a low graduation rate, but that's lack of true clarity and understanding about the purpose of an alternative school. Students come to Chester Lewis and one of their programs behind on credits, most of them substantially behind on credits, and/or lacking a connection in a comprehensive environment. Chester Lewis and the staff have worked hard at changing the narrative of alternative education so that students feel accepted and can begin the sometimes very long process to return to on track to graduate. So, I want to share with you a little bit of data from 2019 and forward. And then, a couple years ago, Mr. Parks flipped the narrative on, instead of looking at what our graduation rate is at an alternative school, let's talk about what our graduation rate wouldn't have if not for them. So, let me give you an example. And this is rough math, because we don't have exact numbers, but in 2019, Chester Lewis programs had 212 graduates. We estimate that Chester Lewis added about 6.2% to our district graduation rate, meaning without them, we would have been 6.2% lower. So, here's the rest of the data. 2020, they had 243 graduates, approximately 7.2%. 2021, 242 graduates, approximately 7.5%. 2022, 285 graduates, approximately 8.9%. 2023, 329 graduates, approximately 10.3%. So, let's just give it up for Chester Lewis and its staff. And Mr. Parks gave me a list of everyone that's here, but everyone that's here is not on this list, and I don't want to miss anyone. So, all Chester Lewis staff members, if you don't mind just doing a quick stop, tell us who you are and what your role is at Chester Lewis, and then, Mr. Parks will save the best for last.
Hello, I'm Virginia Quincy, and I teach English at Chester Lewis.
Thank you.
And meditation and mindfulness.
Hi, I'm Tamika Tucker. I am the behavioral specialist.
Marvin Fox, I'm the senior liaison.
Hello, my name is Melissa Patterson, and I am business technology.
I'm Charlie Jenny, and I'm physical science and earth and space science.
I'm Jan Mead, and I'm all the biological sciences.
Angela Cooper, and I teach math.
I'm Joshua Sheppis, and I teach PE.
I am Richard Estes, and I teach government, US history, economics, and sociology.
I'm Brad Holmes, and I'm security.
I am Emily Lee, and I have the business classes, which includes financial literacy.
I'm Karen Struble, and I do the transitions program.
I'm Matt Sims. I teach world history, world geography, and US One.
I'm Jessica Curtis, and I teach math.
I'm Martin Shockett, and I teach English as well.
Good evening. I'm Carmen Jimenez. I'm the tech support person for the building.
I'm Leroy Parks, and I teach adulting 101 with students. No. First of all, thank you to Lauren. I'm a, it's affected me a little more than I thought it would, because hearing those numbers and working with these outstanding people, it's just a little overwhelming right now. So, I think several of you that know me know this is unique. I always have something to say. But those numbers she put out, or that she said to you all, are individual lives. Those are students that, my analogy is, is that we are the ER of Wichita Public Schools was a hospital. We're not the baby ward where everybody's happy and bubbly all the time, and you know, some of the other places, but these folks are all staff doctors, and they, you know, when you go in, you get a chart, and we analyze it. We look at a kid, and we try to get him healthy and get him back on their way. And that's what they do. So, I guess that makes me the chief resident, and, but I just want to, I just, I have to say to Gil, Mr. Alvarez, several years ago, when we started this, and we took this on, and I still get PTSD every time Gil calls me, about different ways of serving different students. And he talked about an umbrella of services and just giving kids opportunities. And it started with the Transitions Learning Center where, well, let me back up. The Metros back in the day, Ernestine, thank you so very much. She was one of my first calls that I got from a board member when the Metros consolidated and to keep things going forward and to keep, you know, how important it was for those kids that are at risk. And so, I accepted that challenge. Coming from a comprehensive, I was a principal at Southeast High School for nine-plus years or so, and so, coming into the alternative world, I had to learn a lot, and I learned a lot from these folks here about basically that socioeconomic doesn't matter, per se, that we can make a difference in kids. And so, that is my message. That is the message I put up, but, put out. But, so, when the Metros closed, and you know, we kind of serviced there for a little bit of time, I was over the virtual school program, and thank the Lord for, you know, that being, Gil, that was a positive phone call, Gil, when you called and moved, which we now know as EIA, because I don't know how, if I could do much more. But I appreciate your passion. I appreciate your heart. He had this idea of these kids that are in foster care, and they're transitioning, and their paperwork don't catch up with them, and they're sitting, they're sleeping in these places and doing all this stuff. And so, he said, you know, what if Chet had like a transition? You know, and I'm like, usually, I'm like, all right. I mean, well, you know, what do you got now, Mr. Alvarez? But he cares, and so, I appreciate that so much. This is crazy. I have been in the public, which, this is my 32nd year. Mama, as I call her, Ms. Logan, thank you. I don't know what you thought you were getting when you hired me, but here we are. And I can honestly stand here and say, I've never had a job more rewarding than the one I have now. So, I joke, where Susan Willis, please pay me. I joke that I steal money every day because I go to a place every day just overjoyed to be there with these folks and our babies, our little Chet baby. So, Lauren, Dr. Hatfield, sorry. I hired her too. So, back in the day over the phone, we won't say that. But thank you for recognizing us. Thank you for seeing us for what we do. Needs a lot, because I don't get to come down here very much for this stuff, so.
Kathy?
Most questionable decision you ever made, hiring me, for sure. But any questions or comments that you want to direct towards Mr. Parks while he's here? I normally don't normally do that with good news, but this is pretty special, so.
It's wonderful to have all this staff down here. We really appreciate you all coming. Thank you. Kathy?
Thank you. Mr. Parks, Dr. Hatfield, all of you instructors. I have toured all of the facilities. I have attended the graduations, and I am brought to tears because of the joy that I see in you. Mr. Parks, when you go to work and you have joy, it's not a job. And I love the joy that you do show with your staff and with your students. And I'm so grateful that 259 has this opportunity for these students who would fall through the cracks, and we don't know where they would be if you guys were not here, to give them that second chance, sometimes a third chance or a fourth chance, however long it takes to get them. Dr. Hatfield, we sat together at a graduation. You saw the joy that I had for you and for our students, so thank you. Excuse me, I'm getting choked up now. Thank you very much for giving these people other chances to succeed in life. If it were not for you, they would not have that opportunity. So, know that you have impacted. You may never know what you have done for somebody until they come back to you when they're 40 or 50. Well, you'll still be here then, right? Yes, that's a good thing. But thank you so much, teachers, instructors. Mr. Parks, you are awesome. Thank you.
Ernestine?
One of the things that is perhaps misunderstood is that a student can be at risk for lots of reasons. It could be the economic. It could be that they've got a parent that has a terminal illness, and it's totally overwhelming them. It could be that they have a personal illness or a personal medical thing so that they have to miss too much of the regular school. There is no socioeconomic group that is all at risk or that all the at-risk come from. I just appreciate you all so much, and yes, my heart is with you. You are where I have been, where I was for 25 years with alternatives. By the way, my dentist was a graduate of the alternative high school. I thank you, and I am proud of you, and you're one of the best things that's happening in this city. And you are too much of a secret. We need to get, we need to toot our own horn. He who tooteth not his own horn, get his own horn, not tootus. We need to toot our horn about Chester Lewis.
We are going to miss your analogy with horns. I just want to add to this, because alternative has a very special place in my heart. As the at-large district representative, your schools are the ones that I represent. In fact, I'm scheduled to come out on Wednesday. So, I'll be out there and see you all then. But this building, this program truly saves kids. And we need, we're saving kids all over this district with our learning centers, et cetera. But this is special, because you really do give them a second, a third, or fourth chance. And you don't give up. It's amazing. You just keep coming back, and they keep saying, oh, no, I got too much. And you keep saying, get in here. So, thank you very much. It's wonderful to be able to show the public how proud we are of this alternative program. And Leroy, you will always be able to call me mom, because you're a joy, and you're a wonder, and you're doing great things in that building.
I was sitting over and reflecting. I think the last time I got this emotional was in '04, when I blew the building up in Marshall. You came out, so it's been a little bit. The anniversary's coming up, by the way.
I was emotional that time, but not in a happy way. Thank you all very, very much. Okay. Next item?
Next item under Reports, Service Employees International.
I'm not seeing anyone, so, next item?
Next item under Reports, United Teachers of Wichita.
Hi, Katie.
Good evening. Superintendent Beilefeld, President Logan, Vice President Albert, and BOE members. We've been in school now for, well, the teachers have been in school for about six weeks, and I'm happy to report that it does seem like morale is higher this year than the last few years. I know after COVID, getting the kids back to school, it was really, really hard just to get back in the routine of things, and so, that's been really pleasant. There are, we are hearing lots of concerns from sped teachers. And it's, I mean, probably every single day, I'm hearing concerns from sped teachers about their workload, their caseloads, communication issues, just the staffing issues. And I know when I'm driving down Kellogg, I'll see billboards up about we need sped teachers, and I absolutely agree. Like, that would help with the staffing issues if we could hire them. I've seen ads on Facebook, you know, come work for Wichita Public Schools, but we have to keep them here. And so, I'm asking for you to look over that retention report that we did and also listen to some of the suggestions that we're hearing from our sped teachers. They're asking for more time. They have a lot of legal paperwork, and they are working with our most vulnerable students. And so, I would appreciate, I know I spoke with Superintendent Beilefeld earlier today about sitting down and talking about those sped issues. So, I just wanted to bring that up. But yeah, otherwise, I subbed in pre-K last week, and bless their hearts. They, the kids are adorable, but I don't know how they do it every day. Like, they, oh, my goodness. The kids are, they're so cute, but you have to have so much energy. And so, I'm pretty sure I was in my pajamas by 5:30 that night. So, even though it looks so cute, like they're playing, I mean, the amount of learning they're doing, it's absolutely wonderful. And then, I subbed in sped the week before, and actually, the superintendent was there. I missed him, but it was so great being, I was in the classroom supporting the teachers and working with those sped students, and just to see our teachers teaching and interacting, it really, I mean, it was wonderful. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item?
Next item, Public Communications.
We do have one speaker tonight, Kendrell Holly. And as you come down, come on down to the microphone, sir. It'd be great. And as you're coming down, a speaker's comments at a meeting are not to exceed three minutes and will be limited to the registered topic and will not include personnel manners concerning district employees or manners that would violate the privacy of students. Thank you very much for coming here tonight.
Again now? I've never been to one of these before.
You're fine. Just whenever we all get your hand out, you can start, and your time will start, so. Okay, you can go ahead and begin, sir. Thank you.
All right. I typed this out so I make sure I hit all my points. I wanted to say hello and thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. I have three minutes, so I'll be brief and to the point. My name is Kendrell Holly. I'm a registered respiratory therapist with 14 years' experience and a certified asthma educator. Both of those credentials are coming by the way of the National Board of Respiratory Care, and my license is by the, by way of the Kansas State Board of Healing Arts. If anyone wants to know what a respiratory therapist is, I'm the one at the head of the bed making sure you're still breathing when you come into the ER. And despite what Leroy, what's his name, said? Baby wards are not all fun. Get that out of the way. But anyway, back to, however, I feel the most important credential I hold as I stand here today is I'm an asthmatic for 48 years. I come to inquire as to whether or not USD 259 stocks albuterol in the form of MDIs or a meter dose inhaler in spacers at their schools. Statistics show one in 12 students has asthma. I'm aware that in the school system, a doctor's permission slip, as well as a form that they have to file, is needed for them to carry their own medication. My concern is what happens when they leave them at home, and there's an issue that needs to be taken care of? When an asthma attack starts, you have seconds sometimes, not minutes, to try and treat and reverse the symptoms similar to an anaphylactic reaction to an allergy. In the past, there was a bill introduced, Bill HB 2086, that would have called for public schools in the state of Kansas to maintain a supply of albuterol MDIs and spacers that could be used to administer medication in times of emergency. My question's, I guess, for the board that I'm curious on, is 259, USD 259 aware of HR 2468? It is a bill, part of the School-Based Allergies and Asthma Management Act. And second question is, does USD 259 stock albuterol in their schools? And if they do not, can they explain why? That's all I have right now.
Thank you very much for coming, sir. And if you have, I don't see your name on these documents, but if we can get that, we will, you know, try to respond back to some of your questions. Yeah. Okay. Next item?
Next item under Finance, 2023-24 Budget Adoption. Next item, under Finance, 2023-24 Budget Adoption.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Gosh, it's been a long trail, though we're finally getting closer to the end.
Hopefully, we'll do it. Good evening, President Logan, Superintendent Beilefeld, Vice President Albert, members of the board. Kind of threw me a little bit. I think I had not reviewed the agenda closely enough to know I was heading before education, so. But I can adapt. Okay, so, President Logan, you are exactly right. It has been a six-month journey, month over month, bringing the board the facts, the estimate assumptions, all of the underlying data that has helped us form the proposed budget that we bring to you tonight. Starting back in March, where we first covered some information regarding capital outlay, until last board meeting on the 28th, where we had our hearing on the budget and the revenue neutral rate. So as we move through tonight, almost every slide is going to be a repeat of information we have already covered. Primarily, we're covering it one last time for the purpose of the minutes, because by statute, we have to include this information in the minutes of the meeting in which we adopt the budget. So, our statute, 721163, which first covers the requirements of the building needs assessments, those were conducted in the spring of 2023. Principals, building leadership teams, site councils were all included in the process. Results were gathered and presented to the Board of Education. We provided you details by building on July 17th, and then we covered summary information at the board table on July 31st. Those needs assessments were published and are still on our website for anyone to review at any time. This particular year's needs assessment process was improved over prior year. Last year was the first year we had done it, so we took some feedback from various stakeholders, and we improved our process, which included earlier discussion with principals and building leadership and district leadership at district council in January. And then we also provided less centralized data, and we had the schools complete more of the form itself so that it had more of their individual needs and issues reflected in those documents. Again, the building leadership team and site councils were integrally involved, and then additionally, we had a requirement that if you were putting a barrier or a need on your needs assessment, that you put a budget increase request along with it so that we could evaluate kind of the item that you were asking for to help solve your issue and put a cost to it and prioritize those accordingly. In addition to the needs assessment information, the state assessment evaluation has also been a part of our discussions. At the June 12th board meeting, Mr. Alvarez, I believe, provided the board some significant information related to the KISA accreditation process that included some of our state assessment data. We also provided this board state assessment data with the needs assessment information on July 17th. The statute does require that the board answer three questions. The first question, what are the general barriers that need to be overcome in order for all students to achieve over a Level 2? And we have kind of two approaches on barriers. We kept the group of barriers that we identified last year. We did not believe they had substantively changed, so we left the student barriers, the staff barriers, the family barriers, and the community barriers, for the most part, intact. They continue to be issues for our system. But we did identify four specific areas of need related to barriers that need to be overcome in order for students to really start moving on that state assessment trajectory. So, one of the first items that was kind of a common theme throughout the needs assessment were child study team ratios, then paraprofessional training, specifically special education, parent and community involvement, and most of our schools specifically addressed attendance issues. So as we then took the question number two, what budget actions must be taken in order to overcome these barriers, we specifically took those four main issues and embedded those at least to start in the budgetary process. We're not going to fix those in a year, but we definitely wanted to show that we were starting to make some really strong inroads in that, in those four areas. So, you can see the highlighted items where we have embedded those federally funded ESAR counselors, social workers into the actual budget for a longer term, instead of those kind of sunsetting when those federal funds end. We are piloting an attendance initiative, and there's several kind of other projects going on related to attendance. We are specifically targeting parap training in our PD approaches. And then there were a lot of other issues that we also embedded in the budgetary process, including but not limited to recruitment and retention of staff through wages. And then all the items that we couldn't necessarily address through the budgetary process, we kind of pointed to remaining ESAR funds to at least get us another year down the road. So we feel we've, again, taken those obligations that the board has related to state statute, and really this year been very focused on this is how we're responding to those questions. And the final question, what is the estimated time it will take for students of Wichita Public Schools to achieve above a Level 2? These answers remain unchanged from last year, primarily because we just don't have enough data yet to really make a modification to kind of our early approach related to this work. So, we will retain our goal of 50% of students performing at Levels 3 and 4 by 2030, and the district goal of decreasing the percentage of students performing at Level 1 by between 1 and 5% annually. If you recall, we did make about a 1% gain out of Level 1s into those upper levels, so we had met that particular goal. But again, one year of data is not a trend to make yet, so we're going to evaluate this for another year. So with all of that data in place, our budget remains unchanged. The proposed budget from our meeting on the 31st of July and then from our notice of hearing and our hearing, we are still proposing a net budget of $970 million, which is about $20 million less than last year. These two budget years are still significantly impacted by COVID relief funding. So as we kind of approach the end of this fiscal year, these levels of budgetary authority will go down significantly, back into the, probably the 800 range, which is more typical of our budget. The mill levy that our proposed budget establishes is 51.956 mils. This is the second lowest mill levy in the past 13 years. It is up slightly from last year. I think we've covered that significantly over the past month or so. It is important to note that our budget continues to remain student-focused, with 86% of our operating budget in direct support of students. So we're not heavy on our overhead. We really do plan and bring to the board a budget that supports student, student needs, student academic needs, and then all of the support systems that go into helping that student be successful. So we have two recommendations for you tonight. The first one is actually new to the board. It's not new as far as what the board has approved in the past, but a formal resolution is new. Administration is recommending that the board adopt Resolution 2023-11, authorizing the local option percentage in the amount of 33% for the 2023-24 school year. Now, we have talked all through the last few months that we were building the budget that we were proposing to you with 33% of the LOB, and that's where we've been for the past four years. This particular requirement of an annual resolution is another one of those items that has kind of been in statute, but no one has actually required it, and now they're requiring it. Central County wants the resolution annually, so we will now be bringing to you a resolution annually that states we are at 33% of the LOB. So that is our first recommendation for you tonight, but I can pause before we get to the second one to see if there's questions on what we have covered or if we're ready.
Yours is thinking? Oh, okay. Well, Diane?
We're talking about building needs assessment, and Superintendent Beilefeld, could you give some more information on exactly what the building needs assessment entails? Susan kind of highlighted some of it, but could you explain for people so they could understand that better?
Sure. On our webpage, under Departments, if you click on the Finance Department, you'll see all of Susan, or Ms. Willis's team's great work, and there's a building-by-building breakdown. So every building has their own individual needs assessment that's conducted by the staff and the leadership in the building. And when you, if you find a building and you click on that, you will see demographic breakdown, and then staff needs, curriculum needs, and then they kind of go through a process of really analyzing what are the things that they need. Then, part of what Susan's team does is puts all that together. So when you saw the 82 out of 88 buildings say, you know, attendance is a need, that meant that 82 individual buildings put something about attendance, and then they aggregate all that together to kind of create some systemic district-wide things that we can do. But it's all public for everyone to access, and they can see all the information on there, so I don't leave anything out.
Yeah, the questions on the needs assessment are consistent. KSDEEP has a template online, and we basically lift their template and put it into an automated form that makes it easy for school building principals and their support staff to kind of complete it in a form, electronic form-based model. So, but we're not developing those questions. Those are developed by the state.
Thank you. And then also, for buildings, we really do budget for buildings, not just each elementary school gets the same dollar amount. It's per building based on the needs that are described within that building, correct?
Yes, we do have a model that allocates dollars to buildings based on student head count, and then those are weighted by programs in that building as well, and staffing is also determined that way. So a particular building that has three sections of kindergarten, obviously, will get more staffing, more support than a building with two sections of kindergarten or one. I don't think we have any with one, but that's the model we're using for K to 5, and then obviously, as we get into middle and high, a little bit more complex staffing models since they have more electives, and it's a little bit more complex to work through that. But generally, yes, and we do track every expenditure that we can at the building level, so we are recording particular expenditures at the building so that if you ask, how much are we spending at an Adams Elementary, or a PV Middle, or at East High, we can tell you specific expenditures that are going into those buildings.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have a question for Kelly, I think. Under your slide, your seventh slide, which is on page four of our handout, it lists the four pieces, and you addressed that a little bit. But I know we're doing some things, as I look down at the actions taken, I'm not seeing anything jump out at me about attendance, but I know we're doing things to increase that attendance since literally most all of our buildings said attendance was a problem. Could you just, for our public, give them a very quick synopsis of the kinds of things that we're doing to help with attendance this year?
Sure. So one of the things you guys approved a couple of weeks ago was Everyday Labs. It's that pilot program for 12 schools, 12 or 13, I don't remember, but that does, it tracks kind of the chronic absenteeism rate, and then gives text message, phone calls, and email messages in an automated way to nudge parents to say, hey, did you realize, I think, you know, Katie mentioned how far we are in the school year. We're about 20 days in, give or take, so any student that's missed two days of school or more so far this year is chronically absent already. So we want to bring awareness to the parents, and we, through that program, are hoping to try to automate that. We're piloting it. We'll see if that continues to work. Wendy's team is also doing a PR campaign of sorts about attendance, so hopefully you've seen it. If you click on our webpage, it's the first thing that pops up. So they have provided buildings, some Instagram posts, some social media posts, some emails to send to parents, and then we're also sending some of that out at a district level. And then I also know, as I've been in buildings, a lot of our buildings are doing individualized things at the building level to focus on attendance, too. So it's kind of a, you know, we try to do it systemically, but we also need, you know, the people that have the connection with kids are the ones that kids will care most when they call and say, hey, we really miss you. So we can do what we can at the district level, but we need the building support, too, to get kids to school every day.
Thank you. Thank you. Kathy?
Thank you. On the recommendation number one, could you go into a little bit of detail about what the local option percentage is?
Sure. So the district has its general fund, right? And that fund is driven by our enrollment. We have students, full-time equivalents, times-based aid, and we get a dollar figure in the general fund. School districts can adopt a local option budget, which is a supplementary budget to the general fund. It's another fund, but it is mathematically based on what you adopt in your general fund. And you can adopt up to 33% of your general fund as your local option budget. And most districts, particularly those districts that I know in our immediate surrounding area, most districts in Kansas are at 33%. The average is 31.8, I think, this year. So most are over 30% because there just isn't enough funds available in the general fund to support school expenditures. So this is, the local option budget is another way to support expenses, and in our case, particularly those that are not necessarily as directly classroom-based, so we don't pay for teachers out of the local option budget. We pay for those global expenditures like utilities, transportation, technology.
I understand the LOB, but the LOPE, the local option, is that just a percentage of?
The percentage is, right.
Okay.
Yep.
And Central County has not requested this until now?
Not the annual statement that you're at 33 or 32, or whatever percentage you are, but they want a resolution that states annually, this is the, this is the percentage we're adopting as part of the budget.
And we have actually given them that resolution when we voted in the 33% originally.
Correct, right.
This is just a new requirement that they're asking from us.
Correct.
Okay. I'm not seeing other questions. We do need a vote on this, the recommendation. Is there a motion?
I move that the board adopt Resolution 2023-11, authorizing the local option percentage in an amount of 33% for the 2023-2024 school year.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, the motion was made by Diane and seconded by Ernestine. Please cast your vote. Motion passes 7-0. You had another motion that you needed from us tonight, is that correct?
I do, probably the more important one, right? So Administration is recommending that the board adopt the 2023-2024 budget as proposed and presented. It should be noted in the minutes that as part of the budgetary process, the board was included in the needs assessment and state assessment review as follows. The needs assessments were provided to the board, the needs assessments were evaluated by the board, and the board used the needs assessments as part of the process to approve the 2023-24 budget.
Is there discussion on this? I'm seeing none. Is there a motion?
I move that the board approve and adopt the 2023-2024 budget as proposed. It should be noted in the minutes that as part of this process, the board was included in the state assessments review and needs assessment review as follows. The needs assessments were provided to the board, the needs assessments were evaluated by the board, and the board used the needs assessments as part of the process to approve the 2023-2024 budget.
I second that.
Motion was made by Diane and seconded by Ernestine. I'm seeing no discussion, so please cast your vote. The budget passed 7-0. Thank you for all your hard work on this.
Thank you all.
You get to sleep one night, and then you start on next year's. Next item?
Next item, under Education, Strategic Plan Vision.
Mr. Beifelt?
Sure, I'm not going to sit over there, but we, so we just have one slide for this presentation, so it should be a short one. But we have an amended vision statement based on the feedback we got from the board last meeting. So what we did was we took the feedback, and we gave the planning, Strategic Planning planning team, a couple of different options for how the language read, and this was what is being recommended tonight to the board. So you can see, basically, the addition is the last four words. So Wichita Public So Wichita Public Schools will be the premier district of choice and inspire each student and staff member to thrive and become future-ready within the greater community. So we, we heard kind of the discussion at the board table. I went back and watched the video. And this idea that we aren't just preparing students kind of in isolation for themselves. We're preparing students, our vision is to prepare students to be part of something bigger than themselves and to be good citizens in a broader community. So this is our recommendation for, for the vision statement.
Okay.
Discussion? Ernestine, you had kind of brought this up last time. Is there anything that you want to say about this?
No, that one sounds pretty good and I'm really appreciative. At the risk of stirring up a hornet's nest, I did not think about the fact that I, that we voted last week on the mission statement. And I was thinking that we would put the word citizenship in that also. And I realized that we voted without it in there. I don't know if it's worth it to put it, to have a discussion and make a motion, but I just wanted to let you all know, that last mission statement. I want to go back, first of all. I deeply appreciate the, the work on putting this, our, our belief statements together, our shared beliefs, to make it so that it does include the citizenship. And the common good is just exactly what it needs to be, is that we are preparing. Now, the last thing, I just wanted to have that, where it says that preparing citizenship, I mean, our students for life, college and career. I would have liked to have had it say, life, citizenship, college and career. Just that one word. Now, I confess, I don't know if it's worth, I would ask my colleagues, is it worth me asking it that we reconsider? Because we voted it in last time. My concern is, is that I want it as a public statement. I want the world to know that we are not just preparing it for just individuals to have a good life, yes. But we are seeing that there is a, a community that we are serving too. I remember the gentleman last week who was saying that students for our, his educating, they're paying taxes to educate our students, didn't accomplish anything for him. And I think that that's a wrong attitude because our students and our taxes and our community providing, what we provide for the now and the future is vital to make this, this society, this city, this state, this nation. And so I, I will yield to what the rest of you think, if, if it's worth putting the, taking a vote to put the word citizenship in or a different word that means that, because that may be too limiting. So that's my comment.
Okay, thank you. And, and I think we kind of need to pull those two apart because we need to vote on the vision. We have not voted on that. So if we could do that first, then we can have the discussion of the other, okay?
I move that we accept the vision statements as, is that, as they are on the, as they've been rewritten and are before us today.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. It was voted that we accept the vision statement as written by Ernestine and seconded by Diane, or Hazel, seconded by Hazel. So if you're all in agreement with that, because I see no comments, please cast your vote. Motion passes 7-0. Now, for your comments about adding citizenship under mission, we did vote this in last time. If we were going to change it, we would need to have a vote to suspend our motion from last time and pass that. And then we would need to add, add that in. My thinking on this, if you look at the handout that has the vision, mission and beliefs on it, under common good, it is very clear, public education is the foundation of functional citizenship, financial well-being and productive participation as a member of our society. That's one of our very clear belief statements. To me, if we, and this is my opinion, if we start adding in citizenship, why don't we also add in financial well-being? Why don't we also add in? But our belief statement, I think, covers us with this, along with this greater community piece that we just added to the vision. So I'm not prepared to change what we voted on last time, but I certainly am willing to listen to the rest of you. Diane?
Yeah, I agree with you, Cheryl. I think we've, we've laid out a lot of things. I hear you on what you're saying, Ernestine, and I appreciate your passion for citizenship. But we do have it stated a couple of different times within our shared beliefs and our vision statement. And so I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward the way it is already stated. So that way staff doesn't have to spend any more time on our, on our vision and mission and we can move towards the next step in our strategic planning process.
Any other comments? Ernestine, you want to add anything?
No, I'll yield.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Because I really do, I really do know that we're going to teach them to be good citizens. We're going to teach those kindergartners to be able to work with each other. We're going to teach our older students to have teamwork and to be able to share and to understand what a majority vote is and things like that. It's not as if the statement would make it that they do that because we're going to keep on doing that. So I'm okay with it. I just, I just want the public to know that we really are doing something. It's not just for that child. It's for the greater good of the community that we have education and educated citizens.
I, I cannot agree with that more. Thank you. Okay, with that, we now have adopted shared beliefs, vision and mission for our new strategic plan. So thank you to you, Mr. Bielefeld and all of your team and all of the board members for moving us on because now we can keep going with the strategic plan and, and have it back here by December to vote on too. Ernestine?
And I do want to thank the people that worked on this all the way from the beginning. This is an excellent basis on which our school district can not only be proud of what we're doing, but I think that we can actually be a model for the whole Midwest and perhaps beyond. I really do think this is an excellent job that has been presented for us to be able to say, this is who we are and I'm real proud of it. Thank you. Thanks to that team you had.
Thank you. Next item?
Next item, under Education, Every Student Future-Ready Strategic Plan. Goal number one, increase graduation rates.
Ah, fun times now. It was nice to get a little bit of data from Lewis and, and now we get to see the bigger picture. So thank you. Welcome.
All right, good evening. President Logan, Vice President Albert, Superintendent Bielefeld, members of the board. I'm excited to be here tonight and give you an update on our graduation rate data. Just a little caveat, we do not have 2023 data because technically, students can, can have through the month of September and they can still count in their graduating class. And so we still have a couple of weeks left in the class of 2023 graduation window. And so it will be several more months still before we get official 2023 graduation data from the state. So the context of this presentation is to talk to you about how the strategic plan that we are currently operating under prior to this new strategic plan that's in development, how that has impacted our graduation rates in Wichita Public Schools. So that is a little bit of context about this, about what this presentation is going to entail and why the class of 2023 data will not be available. Later this evening, right after this presentation, Mr. Tim Hamlin, who's our Executive Director of College and Career Readiness, is also going to talk to you about strategic plan goal number three. Because you really can't have one conversation without the other one. And so I put this slide in here just to understand that we can't impact goal number three unless we're impacting goal number one. And so just drawing some attention to the fact that those goals are so interconnected, intertwined. And in the future, they're going to be even more interconnected and intertwined because the graduation requirements for the state of Kansas are changing. So future board presentation alert. In November, we will come and talk to you about what those changes are. And our goal one and goal three are going to become even more connected than they currently are as a result of what those changes are. So just a little preview for November, maybe something to look forward to or not look forward to, depending on what your stance is related to that. On the screen, you will see the goal number one as outlined in the strategic plan that guided us last year. So it was by 2025, the high school graduation rate will increase from 74% to 80%. The 74% was the district graduation rate when this strategic plan was originally implemented, which was 2018. We will, I will show you some more data in a little bit, but we actually hit 80% in 2020. But there were some extra special things we got to do in 2020 that we don't normally get to do in terms of waiving credits and some different things like that. And so we wanted to make sure we kept that goal because we needed to make sure that when we couldn't do that anymore, we were still able to maintain the 80% graduation rate. We didn't want the COVID 80% to be a blip in the radar and then us to go back down. And so that's why that goal remained the same. For the indicators of success, the region Algebra I is on there is because we consider Algebra I to be a graduation gatekeeper. If you don't pass math as a freshman, that tends to be a pretty big indicator that you might not graduate. And so we wanted to really look hard at our Algebra I data. And part of that is offering a new class called Foundations of Algebra last couple of years. And that's for students who, by metrics from when they are in eighth grade, have shown they are not ready to take Algebra I. And so we don't want to put them in Algebra I. They're not ready to take Algebra I. We're just setting them up. And so the Foundations of Algebra class allows us to prep students so that the next year, they can take Algebra I without remediation and then get the credits that they need in math to graduate. So that's why that one is particularly focused on Algebra I because it's a pretty big gatekeeper. The second one, if we aren't teaching to the rigor level of the standard, then all we're doing is allowing the opportunity and the achievement gap to get bigger and bigger and bigger because we're not teaching on grade level. And so the reason bullet point two in there is in there is because we've got to make sure that we are teaching on grade level because you can't intervene your way out of a tier-one instruction problem. We have to teach on grade level standards. That's why that indicator of success is in there. And really, the second bullet on indicators of success and the third bullet on indicators of success are the same is we need to teach on grade level so that students can be proficient on grade level standards. They're connected to each other. And then the third bullet point, increased percent of students on track to graduate at the end of each semester of their cohort year. Power BI in our Analytics and Assessment Department. Power BI is where we house, it's like Data Central for us. It's where we house all the data. We can go in there and look at data at any time. Power BI and our Analytics and Assessment folks have really allowed us to get a quick snapshot. I can log in right now and I can tell you who's on track, who's not on track. And so that has allowed us to really be more intentional, intentional about our early warning systems and helping our administrators and counselors catch kids before they are so far off course that it's hard to convince them that they can get their way, dig their way out of that hole. So that's why those indicators of success are on there. Before we go into deep data, I wanted to just share a little bit with you about what the Kansas State Board of Education's definition is of a successful high school graduate. And so a successful Kansas high school graduate has the academic preparation, cognitive preparation, technical skills, employability skills and civic engagement to be successful in post-secondary education, in the attainment of an industry-recognized certification or in the workforce without the need for remediation. I think in that statement, you can see several things. One, I think you can see and hear a lot of the things that you just voted on in a mission and a vision and some of our shared beliefs, shared by the Kansas State Board of Education. I also think you can see our graduation goal, number one, and our graduation plus goal, number three, in that statement, particularly at the bottom where it talks about attainment, industry-recognized certification or in the workforce without the need for remediation. Just some quick notes on the five italicized items. So academic preparation. The academic preparation is that you've met the graduation requirements as outlined by the Kansas State Board of Education. And then the graduation requirements as outlined by you, our Wichita Public Schools Board of Education, because we actually require more things to graduate from Wichita Public Schools than the state of Kansas requires us to have students for graduation. The cognitive preparation is problem-solving skills and collaboration, right? Those, what some people call soft skills, which is also part of employability skills. But the ability to truly think deeply about your thinking. Technical skills, that's where a lot of our CTE and industry-recognized certifications come into place. Do you have a skill in some sort of technical area? We offer 20-plus, I think it was 27 at one point. Tim's probably going to correct me later exactly how many it is right now. Career and technical education pathways. So we have a lot of opportunities in Wichita Public Schools related to technical skills. Employability skills, this is, you know, what does it mean to be employable? Are you on time? Can you follow rules? Can you, do you have interpersonal skills? And we have employability scales that we can rate students on, K-12, separate from an academic grade that says, hey, this is how this student is doing in their employability. And then finally, civic engagement. Ms. Crable's, Ms. Crable's favorite topic, as demonstrated by a previous conversation this evening, but that you are engaged as a citizen of the community of Wichita and that you are looking to better, not only yourself, but our entire community. So that is what Kansas, the Kansas State Board of Education says that's what it means to be a successful high school graduate. So let's talk some numbers, shall we? First, we'll talk about the calculation. It is not as simple as divide number of seniors who graduate by number of seniors you have. You are cohorted in Kansas. So when you go in your freshman year, we are now responsible for you. So we have to figure out, if you leave Wichita Public Schools, where did you go? Because we need to know if you graduated from there to try to figure out. So the second ninth graders enter, they count four years later in our graduation rate. It's not as simple as seniors divided, graduates divided by seniors. We've got to, we have to have data-tracking systems to track them through their entire four years so that we know what happens, which is also why it takes us so long to get graduation data back because September's going to end and they're going to give us this report and we've got to clean through and scrub the report. Oh, nope, we do know this kid exited to a school outside of the state of Kansas. So this exit code needs to be changed to this. It's a lot of data and analytics and making sure we're entering the data correctly to make sure we get an accurate reflection of our graduation rate at the end of the, at the end of the day. All right, so here's some numbers. The reason this chart goes back to 2010 is federally, the federal government changed how graduation rate was calculated after 2009. So any 2009 and before graduation rate was calculated differently than 2010 and forward. So you're not really comparing apples to apples. And so that's why this chart starts in 2010. Also, it fits pretty nicely on the slide. Multiple years doesn't. So you can see, back in 2010, we were at 63.1%. And then the reason in 2018, the bar changes colors is because that was the implementation of the current strategic plan that we are working under. So the baseline for that strategic plan was that 74%, which you saw that 74% in the goal number one statement earlier on a previous slide. So 2019, we jumped to 74%. So, 2019, we jumped to 75.3%. Then, there's our favorite year, 2020, where we jumped to 80.5%. And again, because how schools shut down, kind of the state said, hey, basically, everyone qualifies now for a 21-credit diploma when normally not everyone does qualify for a 21-credit diploma. And so, we were able to do some different things in 2020 than normal. And so, we were like, ooh, okay, we don't want to change the goal because what if we only hit 80.5 because we were able to do these special things that we won't keep doing? So, you saw a tiny dip in 2021 to 79.3%. And then, in 2022, it jumped back up. And the reason those are red is because they're over 80%, which our goal, back up to 80.4%. So, that's super encouraging to me and all the secondary schools is because it wasn't just a COVID blip because we, after 2020, we weren't able to do those special waivers anymore. And so, it was actually, no, this really is 80.4% and we hit our goal. I am super excited about when 2023 comes out, but I can't play guessing games and projection games because that can get me into trouble. But I am hopeful that we'll have another red bar in 2023. All right. So, let's talk a little bit more in-depth about graduation. You have in front of you a handout that looks like this so that you can have more specific data related to the subgroups. But the state of Kansas not only calculates graduation data for everybody, but they also calculate graduation rate for all of these different subgroups. And so, if you look at your paper, for example, let's use Hispanic, they calculate your graduation rate for all of your Hispanic students. They calculate your graduation rate for your Hispanic males. They calculate your graduation rate for your Hispanic females, and so on, and so on, and so on, and so on. So, you actually have 35 subgroups in addition to overall that they are calculating and that we are calculating, helping calculate for the state every single year. And that's what this sheet does, is it shows you all of those subgroups and what they look like. And it gives you 2018 data through 2022 data. So, some highlights, there are seven subgroups on here with a decreased graduation rate. So, those seven subgroups are Asian overall, Asian males, Asian females. African-American overall, African-American males, African-American females. And then, Pacific Islander females. But I'm going to put a little asterisk on Pacific Islander females because Pacific Islander has so few students in it, it's less than 10. So, the state will tell us that actually doesn't count as a subgroup if you have less than 10 students in that subgroup. And that's also why, if you look at that data, it fluctuates wildly. And there are some years where there's not any data at all. It's because we didn't have any students in that subgroup. But when there's very few students in a subgroup, it can fluctuate really fast. And so, that's why you see some of those larger numbers there. So, a little bit of math, if you take the outliers out, the seven subgroups that decreased decreased on an average of 1.7% if you take the outliers out. So, outliers, not to get into a super big statistics lesson, but they are more than one and a half times outside kind of that middle 50% of data. So, if you leave all the, and outliers can really skew your data really fast. So, if you leave the outliers in, those subgroups that have decreased have gone down 3.58% between 2018 and 2022. But if you take the outliers out, which is a more honest calculation of what's really going on, it's 1.7% average decrease in the subgroups that decreased. In the 28 subgroups that increased, so I'm not going to read all 28 of those because it's literally every single other subgroup has increased. If you leave the outliers in, they've increased by an average of 11.62%. If you take the outliers out, they've increased by an average of 8.52%. There's pretty substantial increases in four years. So, I just want to throw out a couple that are pretty amazing because they have double-digit gains in four years. So, they have increased their percentage by more than 10% in four years. So, Hispanic overall and Hispanic males has increased by over 10% in the last four years. Pacific Islander and Pacific Islander males, again, put an asterisk on that because there's very few kids in that subgroup. American Indian and American Indian males have both increased by over 10% in the last four years. Special education and special education males have increased by over 10% in the last four years. Limited English proficient, so that's the state code for our ESOL students, have, in our English language learners, have increased their graduation rate by over 10% in the last four years. Migrant students, over 10% in the last four years. Homeless students, over 10% in the last four years. And really close at 9.9, but not quite making it. Free lunch males, 9.9% in the last four years. So, we have more subgroups with double-digit gains in the last four years than we have subgroups decreasing. That doesn't mean we are satisfied that we have any subgroups decreasing, but I want to create the most accurate picture possible about where we sit related to graduation This next slide shows you graduation data by school, by our high schools, from 2021 to 2022. Of course, we don't have 2023 to update that, but you can see what schools have done, between, individual schools have done between 2021 and 2022. The four with asterisks have asterisks because those four schools in 2022 had their highest graduation rate under the current calculation that they've ever had last year, or well, technically not last year, but the last year we have data. So, those four schools all had the highest graduation rate they've ever had in 2022. I'm hoping that when we show you 2023 data, I got all sorts of asterisks on this page, but I just don't know yet. But that's why the asterisks are there, the highest graduation rates they've ever had. So, overall, from 2018 to 2022, we've increased Wichita Public Schools' graduation rate by 6.4%. Once you think back to earlier, when we talked about Chester Lewis, right, and our alternative programs and where our graduation rate may or may not be if we didn't have such alternative programs. That was that percentage I was giving you earlier. So, what did I say? The 2022 one was 8.9%. So, we are with, using some data analytics, predicting that we would be almost nine percentage points lower overall if we didn't have the alternative programs underneath the Chester Lewis umbrella for our 2022 grads. So, where has a lot of the growth come from? It's that formula that you see up there on the screen. It's Tier One planning, instruction, and assessment. It's at-risk student support. It's credit recovery and it's focus goals leading to graduation. I said earlier, you can't intervene your way out of a Tier One problem, okay? We have to instruct on grade level. That's Tier One. We are instructing on grade level. So, we need to make sure in our classrooms, teachers are planning, instructing, and assessing on the rigor level of the standard. If we're not doing that, we're going to constantly be behind. So, we have to focus on Tier One instruction. At-risk student support is identifying students who are at risk or showing indicators that they are at risk of dropping out and/or not graduating. Credit recovery, I'm going to give you some summer school data, our favorite topic, related to high school in just a little bit. But we have poured a lot into our credit recovery programs in high school with the goal that we get kids on track. Also, the goal that as we get better at Tier One planning, instruction, and assessment and at-risk student support, we can reduce the need for credit recovery. But as long as the need is there, we want to make sure we're meeting the need. But the ultimate goal is we actually will reduce the amount of credit recovery necessary because that means the first two things are getting the job done. And then, finally, focus goals. We had a goal in the strategic plan, you know, Kelly and Gil being able to say, here, this is what you need to go after in the secondary office, being able to tell all the schools, these are the goals you're going after and they're all academic-focused. We have to, we are an academic institution, we've got to go after academics. And so, keeping that at the forefront is absolutely crucial to making sure our graduation rates continue to rise. I'm going to stop here before I dive into summer school data because I don't want it to be disjointed and be able to answer any questions that you have before I dive into summer school.
Diane?
Okay, thanks for the presentation, Lauren. Good job. You actually answered most of the questions I had written out that I want to make sure the public could get answers to. So, well done. You did mention, though, that the state and 259 has different graduation requirements and we actually require more than the state does. Could you explain that further?
Absolutely. So, a great example is we require financial literacy in Wichita Public Schools. To graduate from high school, you have to take and pass financial literacy, which is a half a credit. So, you take that for one semester. The state currently does not require you to take financial literacy to graduate from high school. So, that's an extra half. And then, we also require a half of a CTE elective, so a career and technical education. So, you need a half a credit of that, which the state does not require. And then, we require one more general elective than the state requires. So, we require 23 credits to graduate from high school. The state requires 21.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Ernestine?
I just want to say thank you so much. This is so clear and so well put together. It makes sense. I go to some community groups and neighborhood groups and this is, gives me such good information to be able to share. Thank you.
Okay, I'm seeing no other questions right now, so continue.
All right, let's dive into our favorite topic, summer school. You guys have heard me talk about this ad nauseam probably where you're, you could probably give the presentation about summer school at this point because you guys have heard me so many times. But the reason we're combining summer school with this graduation presentation is that credit recovery part of the formula and making sure that all of you understand how we've invested ESER money and at-risk money to support these credit recovery programs so that we can be as on track as possible. Do we need to take a pause? All right. So, Extended Learning Opportunity, ELO, as a refresher, that extends the semester by 30 hours so that students who finished the semester with a grade between a 50 and a 59.4% get 30 more hours to say, hey, you know what? I have mastered these standards. I'm going to show you that I've mastered these standards so that they can earn a D in that class instead of the F going on their transcript. So, again, to qualify for ELO, you've got to finish between a 50 and a 59.4%. So, and we run ELO twice. We run it in January. That's for all of the classes that take place in the fall. And then, we run it again in late May slash June for all of the classes that you take in the spring. So, here's our January data from last year. We had 2,430 kids eligible for ELO across all of our high schools. Of that 2,430, 1,236 of them attended at least one hour of ELO. So, just over half of them attended. That is a substantial improvement from the last time I showed you this data, which was also a substantial improvement from the time before that when I showed you this data. So, we're getting better at helping kids understand, here's why you should take advantage of this opportunity. So, of those kids who attended, 1,108 of them completed the mastery of the standards and were able to get a D on their transcript instead of an F, which means now I don't have to go back and take that entire class over again. That's 45.6% of all the kids that were eligible earned the credit instead of having to repeat that course. So, then, there's the same exact information, but in graph form for those of you that are more mathematically inclined. So, it's showing you the bluish color, the darker blue is did not attend. The teal color is they attended, but they either stopped attending or they didn't show enough mastery to actually convert the grade from an F to a D. And then, the yellow is they earned their credit back. So, that's January. Then, we do this again. We do this all over again in May. So, in May, we had less students eligible, which is not a bad thing because hopefully more of them actually finished with a passing grade and therefore were not eligible. So, we had 1,959 students eligible in May. 1,017 of them attended, which is 51.91%. So, this was after the school year was over, in the summertime, found a way to get up to school to come and do this. Because in the wintertime, it's after school. In the summertime, school's over and kids are finding their way back to school to come do this. We're not giving them rides, any of that. 948 of them earned the credit, so 48.39%. So, there's the same information with May as compared to January. So, that's one of our summer programs. Another program is learning centers. So, Ms. Logan, you actually mentioned earlier, we have learning centers in all of our schools, which is accurate. We leave the learning centers open in the summertime so that kids can keep working. So, I take a learning center class if I've failed a class and I need to completely retake that course. So, for example, I fail English One first semester, I can take English One first semester in the learning center to recover that credit. So, it's, I've already taken the class, I failed it, now I've got to retake the entire class over again. And we have learning centers at all of our high schools. So, in June, these are classes that they started, but they didn't finish the class. And so, we leave the courses open so that the students can keep working on that class in the summertime because they've already, they already started the class, but they didn't get all the way through it. So, we had 567 enrollments. And then, of that 567, 421 of those kids worked on their class in the month of June. So, 74.25% of our kids that were in learning center kept working in the month of June on their class. 289 of them finished the class that they had started in June. So, 50.97%. And then, there's, you know, a graph showing you the same information. Kids who were enrolled but not active, kids who were active but they didn't finish the credit, and kids that did earn their credit. To be clear, this takes substantially, significantly more hours to do this than it does ELO because you're retaking the entire course, not just showing mastery for that last little bit. So, then, we leave the learning center open again in July, say, hey, you still haven't finished, keep working on it. But we only allow kids to go into July if they've been active in June. So, if you did nothing in June, we're shutting it down. You've got to show us that you're active in June, so we will keep it open in July. So, we physically keep all the learning centers open in June. And then, in July, we run West High and Chester Lewis Learning Centers. We physically keep those open, so all the kids from all the schools funnel into those learning centers in July just because it's not enough volume of kids to keep all of the buildings up and running for the learning centers. So, in July, there were 33 that were like, hey, you know what? You've been active enough and you're still not done, so we're going to let you keep going. 23 of those 33 got into July and kept on working. And all 23 of them, all 23 that tried and kept working in July, finished their class. But you're like, that's 23. That's 23 kids that don't have to retake an entire course. So, there's our same data and we have for the July Learning Center. And then, last but not least, regular high school summer school. This year, we split that high school summer school into two campuses, North High and West High, because we had so many kids the summer before that it was quite overwhelming to North. And so, we decided to split them up. So, ninth and 10th graders took summer school at North High and 11th and 12th graders took summer school at West High. And then, we also offered the virtual option for government and financial literacy, just like we did the year before. So, here's some quick data. So, of our students that enrolled, 71- So, of our students that enrolled, 71.1% of them earned their credit in summer school. The other 28.9% either dropped or got an F. Why would they be dropped? Well, it's only 12 days. If you don't come for one day, we drop you. You've got to be here every day to earn this credit and show us that you have mastered the standards required. So, there's lots of people that maybe sign up for summer school. And then they're like, oh, but I have this appointment on this day. Change it. Sorry. You have to be here, because it's only 12 days. Got to be here. So that's where a lot of the drops come from, are people that even though it says you've got to be here every day, might not read all the fine print or the large bold print. And we miss that. And then we've got to make some changes to the enrollment. And we drop them. If they, if they don't show up, we drop them. We don't give them an F because they, they didn't earn an F. You just, you weren't here to even try. The only ones that we give an F to are kids that they came every day and their grade at the end of summer school was an F. Which that does happen. So, total credits earned, we had 759 and a half credits earned in our summer, in our general summer school program. Of those 759 and a half, 439 and a half of them were original credit. We only offer original credit in government, financial literacy, and PE. Those are the only three classes that you can take for original credit in the summertime. So, whole lots of kids showing up. Why would they do that? It gives them more schedule flexibility during the year to take other elective courses if I take these classes that I have to take in the summertime. And that leaves 320 of the credits that were earned this summer as recovery. So let's put it all together. Between all of the programs, ELO, Learning Center, and regular high school summer school. There were 3,887 courses completed. Which divide that in half, because every course is worth a half a credit. Is 1,943 and a half credits were earned by high school students in our summer programming this past year. 3,135 students earned that 1,943 and a half credits. Which means of our high school students, almost a quarter of them used one of those programs. Between ELO, Learning Center, and summer school. Almost a quarter. That 3,135 is bigger than most districts in the state of Kansas. And that's how many kids we served just in high school. The asterisks means this does not include ESY, which is Extended School Year. That's specifically related to accommodation on an IEP. It does not include SEAT, which is one of our newcomer programs. And it does not include Within Reach, which is like a Learning Center, but it's not on the computer and it's specifically for students with disabilities. So this data does not include those additional programs. Mainly because I wasn't over those additional programs and I don't have access to what their data is. So, there's actually more kids out there that benefited from summer programs. I just don't have access to that, to that data. Let's bring it all together. Try to, try to talk about the graduation data and the summer data all in one. So, a handout that you have that might be of interest to you. It's a little bit older, but there is a website called graduationeffect.org. And it analyzes the impact of additional graduates on your community. Specifically, the economic impact of those additional graduates on your community. So this is a little bit older because it has Class of 2015 data. And it uses 84% on here because that was Wichita Metro area average graduation rate then. So the numbers aren't perfect, but I think it gives you a pretty cool snapshot of why we want more graduates. And why it's important that we raise our graduation rate. So, since 1879, when Wichita Public Schools had its first graduating class, Wichita Public Schools has graduated more than 210,000 kids. Have a Wichita Public Schools diploma, which is, which is pretty amazing. Using the graduationeffect.org data, our increase of about 6.5% in the last four years has resulted and will result in an additional $7.2 million of local gross domestic product. Right here in Wichita because we have more graduates, because we've increased our graduation rate. Which that's a little bit mind boggling when you really think about that and the amount of money that equates to staying right here in Wichita. And, you know, Alicia said this, Kelly has said this about the future of our community sits in our classrooms. And Kelly talks about all the time, this is our future workforce sitting right here. And it's not even close. Wichita Public Schools is the single largest contributor to Wichita's workforce. So the more graduates we have, the better off our community is and our workforce is. Here's, here's a picture of our Super Sac seniors from last year standing out in front of AMAC, looking, looking pretty awesome in their colorful, in their colorful gowns. But I thought that was a nice backdrop for any further questions that you have related to graduation data.
And we do have some questions. Ernestine?
I wanted to say that just on the, like for example, the May Extended Learning Opportunity. That of those that participated, I did a little fast math, actually my computer did, my phone did. Of those that did, that attended, 93%, over 93% got credits. And I, there was one of them, you talked about, that's a July Center. Of the 23 that get it, that attended, the 23 got. So the real secret is if they'll just do it, it will succeed. It's just amazing to see that these kids were coming in those kinds of, you know, summer, it was hot. We were having the 100-plus temperatures. I'm so proud of them and I'm impressed with you and with this program and with all of what we're doing. Wow, and thank you.
Kids are very impressive. It is.
If they'll just do it.
And that's, that is the secret sauce. If we can get you here, right? We can show you it's important enough to get you here, we can get you across the finish line.
That's right.
We just need to show you it's important enough.
Whole attendance piece, no matter when it is. Hazel?
Yes, my question is, maybe I missed, I didn't hear, but you said summer school is 12 days long, right? Is that what you said?
High school summer school is 12 days.
And so in the 12 days, do they complete a semester credit or a half credit?
A half, which is a semester.
Okay.
And then if they do a full year, they're here in the, they're here for eight hours. Eight hours instruction, that's not including lunch, that's not, it's four hours of instruction for each half credit. So, the, like if they take PE, they're here from 7:30 in the morning to 4 o'clock in the evening for 12 straight days.
Okay. And then the other question I have is if they go through the ELO or the Learning Center? How, how long does it take to recover credits there usually?
So for Learning Center, depending on the pace with which you work, it's generally 40 to 60 hours worth of work. And for ELO, we give them 30 hours, but it doesn't take the kids 30 hours to do the recovery. But we do it for 30 hours. Maybe you can come this day, but you can't come this day. Maybe you have multiple classes that you qualified for ELO in and we want to make sure that you can, you can earn your credit in both of those classes. So, we, we give them 30 hours, but for ELO, as soon as you've shown enough mastery to move your grade to a D, then you don't have to keep coming. We're not just holding you there to hold you there. We want you to do what you need to do, show, show off what you know, and then let you, let you get to doing other things.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I want to refer to your slide number seven, if you could pull that up. On that slide, you start in 2010, and that's because the rules changed in 2009. And so for the 2010 school year. And, and in 2010, we had 63% of our kids graduating. Correct. And jump forward to the 2022, we had 80% of our kids graduating. That's a huge percentage to make in that length of time. I think it speaks not only to all the hard work that we're doing at the high school level with Learning Centers and everything else. But it speaks to our whole district. Because we started a generation of kids going through school in 2010. And that generation of kids came out graduating 12 years later at a much higher rate. So it speaks to our program in the Wichita Public Schools as our total program, not just our work at high schools.
Absolutely, Ms. Logan. I'm glad you said that, because you know, you're going to hear future presentations about our literacy and, right? If we have more 3rd graders reading on grade level, guess what's going to happen? We're going to have more kids graduate on time because they can read. And so, all of it is intertwined and interconnected. And we can't be successful turning out graduates unless we're successful all the way along the path.
That's correct. And, and I think the other piece, and you did address this, but I just want to point it out again, particularly for our public. In 2020, that was COVID, and obviously, nothing was normal. And as a district, this board voted to be able to have students graduate with 21 credits instead of the 23 that we normally require. That went right back into, up to 23 in 2021 and 2022. So, we actually, even though it looks like it's higher than 20, it's really not. If we had them all take that 23 credit piece. Because Wichita demands a lot of our students. I mean, two more credits doesn't sound a lot to some people, but if you're way behind, that's a huge amount of credits to, to make up. And so, I'm proud of our district and I'm proud of what we're doing all up and down the row. But I really want to give credit to our high schools because you've accepted the fact that you're going to have to graduate kids and you're going to do whatever it takes to do that. And hallelujah, thank you for your hard work.
We thank you guys for the creative flexibility to create programs that allow kids to graduate.
Ernestine? Oh, I'm sorry.
She can go, you go first.
Well, this just brings to mind, and going back to my hobby horse of the citizenship thing. The senior year is when they take government. And when they oftentimes are 18 and can get registered to vote. When we've increased from 2010 to 2020, 2021, 20%. Those are 20% of people who understand what it means to be a citizen, what it means to vote, what it means to take that senior course and have some understanding. That was impressive to me to think, wow, an increase of 20% in a 10-year period is just astounding. Thank you.
Kelly?
So you mentioned ESER, but I wanted to revisit it because we didn't talk about it explicitly. Most of these programs were going on before ESER. Is that true?
Absolutely, yeah. Mr. Alvarez, as the previous Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Schools, brought in a lot of really creative juice to, to the secondary world to really drive this graduation rate. And so, ELO and Learning Center and Summer School all existed pre-ESER dollars, pre-COVID. They had a little bit different structure, some of them. For example, we required students to pay to take summer school. We paid, we required them to pay $90 a credit if they were taking it for original credit. And so, that has been true. But we've amplified, we've used ESER to really amplify and spread the message of here's why you need to come do this. But yes, Kelly, you're correct. All of this, all of these programs existed before COVID. And before ESER dollars.
I just wanted to make sure we were all clear on that, that where the funding, the funding was there prior to ESER, so.
And it will be there again.
Right, very good.
Right, DeeDee?
Thank you, Lauren.
Great presentation. Thank you very, very much. Okay, next item?
Next item, Every Student Future Ready Strategic Plan. Goal number three, increase certifications and college credit.
We are so thankful to have our new person down here. Thank you very much.
Got the seat nice and warm for you. Yeah. Because I've used all of my talking chips and you don't need to hear me anymore tonight. Unless there's a question that you ask that I need to answer. I'm, I'm staying down here just to help if there's any technical issues. But I want to introduce you all formally to Mr. Tim Hamlin, who is our new Executive Director of College and Career Readiness as part of the Secondary Office. And he's done some, some digging and some diving into data related to our Graduation Plus, goal number three. Including making some changes already to how that data looks. So, I don't want to steal anything else. So, Tim? Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you.
Welcome. We're glad to have you here.
President Logan, Vice President Albert, and Superintendent Kelly Billfield. Dr. Hatfield told me that I get two hours. So, no, everybody calm down, I'm not going to do that. But I do want to take an opportunity, if I may, to say how appreciative I am to the welcome, to the support that I have been shown in this new position. I heard you talk about toot your horn. You all have so much to be proud of in this district, so much to share. And it's just remarkable. But again, everyone has been incredibly supportive and I couldn't be happier to be here. It's great. So, that being said, we're going to jump into this. So, that button there, right? There we go. So, talking about the strategic plan and goal number three. The goal basically is to increase college and career certifications. To quantify that, the goal actually, by 2025, we want 70% of our seniors to graduate with their diploma. And at least one, if not two, MVAs, which stands for Market Value Assets. Now I understand that this may be a review for many of you, a lot of this information. So bear with me. If you've heard this before, just give me that signal and I'll move on. But we're going to kind of just jump into it here. So, as I was preparing for this presentation, I saw what Volume 5 and the word connected. And if you think back just in the hour or two that we've been here this evening already, I mean, you've heard interconnectedness. And that word could not be more true to what's happening this year. And career and tech ed is absolutely one thing that connects kids to school. For many kids, without career and technical education, they may not continue their educational journey. Several years in a previous position, I did some research and the U.S. Department of Education indicated that 67% of the kids that drop out of high school, they make that decision to do so before Thanksgiving of their ninth grade year. Now it doesn't mean that that 67% of the dropouts happen, but they've already, at some point early that ninth grade year, decided, I'm not going to see this to its end. So it's imperative that we connect kids to high school as quickly as we can. I also wondered on the previous presentation that the graduation information, that is, that's thrilling, it's outstanding. You should be very proud of that. And a comment was made about the, about high school. And as a former high school principal, I may be a little sensitive. It always seems like graduation is viewed as a, a high school issue. When it truly is a pre-K through 12th grade effort. And so I, I don't ever want elementary teachers to not understand how important middle school teachers, they're every bit as important. We just get them across the finish line. Or I used to. Moving on. So. Here you see just a few images, different ways that our kids connect. Obviously, you see two gentlemen up in the left-hand corner, they're just collaborating. I'm sure they are totally dialed in on the lesson that their, their teachers asked them to do. This graphic you saw previously in Dr. Hatfield's presentation, the center is the IPS. I'll go ahead and move on to the teal colored gears. And again, notice that word connecting it. You cannot have gears that are going to work unless they're connected. But the teal gears represent the resources or opportunities that all of our students in 259 have at each of the high schools. The FAFSA, ACT, work keys, so on, so forth. Tonight's presentation however focuses more on the green gears, the MVAs. And again, standing for Market Value Assets. As opposed to some of the presentations you heard earlier with lots of numbers and things of that nature. We're getting to a point where now we've started to collect some data that it's kind of fun to see some of the trends. And one of the areas, and the next- And one of the areas, and the next slide here I'll talk about, is some of the results of our ZELLO activities that our students have done here in Wichita Public Schools. But for review, the individual plan of study, it's a state mandate. Basically, through that process, we want our kids to end up with a map. We want them to have a plan. What is their plan after? So those post-secondary goals and aspirations. In the state, seventh through 12th grade students should be doing this. In Wichita Public Schools, again, another reason that you should be proud, that actually is happening already in sixth grade in many of our elementary schools. So, or still in the middle school there. So, so we're ahead of the game there. So here's where it kind of gets interesting. And I understand this may be a little bit difficult, but you have a copy of the PowerPoint, I believe. If you start at the bottom left, that pie chart, that represents the top five career choices of our ninth graders. You see things there like artists, professional athlete, actor, video game. And interestingly enough, the light blue is a race car driver. So either NASCAR has an amazing marketing campaign, or there must have been a new Fast and Furious Edition 45. I don't know. But, but as you do go across, you start to see, ZELLO on the IPS is starting to stick. Kids are starting to put a little more emphasis and focus on the different activities that they're asked to do. Let's go to the bottom there for a second and you look at the colleges or universities that are listed. Part of ZELLO has kids explore and research, what's the cost of post-secondary education? How much does it cost to go to certain schools? In my previous position, and then I'm sure here as well, you would have seen schools, Harvard, Duke, things like that listed there. But what you're seeing is that students start to understand the true costs. And you start to see a little more realistic listing of the schools. And that continues from the ninth grade all the way through the 12th. So as you go along, you continue to look at those career choices and they vary. You start to see, oh, lawyers pop in there in the sophomore year. And then what I find most interesting is after being with kids for four years, they want to figure out, why is that kid that way? So psychologist starts to jump in. But, but it is, it's fun to look at this. And I do want you to understand, this is really starting to take a hold and kids are starting to take it serious. Okay, so talking specifically about the MVAs. One of those is the industry-recognized credentials. What we want is our students to have the opportunity, as soon as they graduate, get out there. Either join the workforce, go on to a, to a post-secondary institution, continue your education. But when it comes to the industry-recognized credentials, there's really two different types that we have here in Wichita Public Schools. You have those that are recognized by the KSDE, which all public schools have. One of the, probably the greater examples there is an ASE Automotive Technician. But then there are also then credentials that are more toward the region or localized here. And this may have been mentioned to you in the past, but like Mel Hamilton Ford, they have a program where they, students can get a credential called Ford ACES. It's not the full-blown like the ASE, but this is more, it may be brake systems, batteries, exhaust, those types of things. Kids that get, earn that credential through our district, they can go out there and get a job immediately. So, there's a whole host of credentials that kids can obtain in this, in this school district. And again, I just, when I first came and toured the Future Ready Center, I was just blown away at that facility. It's amazing, so. Here you kind of look and at the far, at the top left, you'll see again, what happened in 2021. That was our dip. A lot of those credential programs, you just were not able to continue or execute as students were remote or in a hybrid-type situation, so. Work-based learning is another one of the MVAs. Here and there is an amazing opportunity within the district, just the size. A lot of people think that work-based learning opportunities have to be out in industry or business partners throughout the community. You have a tremendous amount of opportunities just in the district where kids can simply go in shadow or actually even take on a work-based learning opportunity within our district. There are different operations, there are different departments. When it comes to the internships, there are pretty hard and fast rules that govern those. And when we look at some of those, the in-house internships, I've already referenced, but the external, kids, there are certain rules. It depends, you have to have 10 hours per, some can be paid. We don't have a tremendous amount of those, but we're working on it. The number 82, I would draw your attention to, that has grown tremendously. Those represent business partners in our community that are willing to take on a high school student. So we're excited about that and hope to see that number continue to grow. All students that take application-level courses, just for those that are not necessarily aware, in CTE, you start out taking introduction or intro courses, then you take a technical course, and then an application course. So our students that are in the application level, they should be taking a work-based learning opportunity. Data around this is a little, I think it doesn't truly reflect where we are. Because there could be opportunities, say, if a parent owns their own business and son or daughter is working in that business or just kind of hangs out every once in a while, that may meet the criteria for a work-based learning opportunity, but it's not being recorded or we're not aware of that. So there's an opportunity here, I believe, to bolster those numbers. And I look forward to trying to dig into it and see how we could do that. College credit, it's been around for a long time. But I'll tell you, with the cost of higher education, this can really, really, really be a huge opportunity for families. Students have the opportunity to earn both college and high school credit through several different ways. Dual credit basically boils down to that student leaves our campus and actually attends, let's say, Friends University, for example. Or they may still stay on our campus, but the instructor is from a university. So it really kind of boils down to the delivery method that the instruction is delivered. Concurrent credit is going to be a staff member from 259. Student stays in your high schools, takes that course, receives both college and high school credit. There are some other, through ZELLO programs, I'm sorry, through Excel, there are technical credits that students can earn and those are free. They get reimbursed or the district does for those. So again, a tremendous amount of opportunities. For families that would like to know where those opportunities are at each of the schools, it is available on the website under the College Career Readiness Office. They can simply click on that. It shows every one of our high schools and all of the concurrent credit opportunities that are there. These just happen to be five of the primary partners that 259 works with. There are articulation agreements with each of those universities or colleges. Here are some of the traditional courses that our students have the opportunity to take. And here again is that word connected. This is where the College Career Readiness and the old CTE kind of join here. These are courses that are clearly career and tech ed courses, but they're also going to receive college credit for them. Lot of opportunities for kiddos. Entrepreneurial experience. When I first learned about this one, Mr. Beilefield giggles here. We're still trying to figure this out. I think the state of Kansas is still actually trying to figure this out. But there are ways that we are tracking this, the bulleted items there, I'm sorry, the dashes. We have a young entrepreneurs, we have a market day. So students that participate in those, that checks the box for an entrepreneurial experience. Here too, like the work-based learning, I think we're under-reporting what's there. We have lots of brilliant, bright kids out there that may own their own business and don't realize or that we don't know it. And so, again, another area to grow and find that data. Pathways. This was mentioned earlier, so I'll go ahead and address it now. So I've heard the number 27 used several times in recent meetings and things. We in fact, this school year have 25. So if I may, I'd like to explain. Each spring, KSDE requires school districts to execute a process known as pathway maintenance. And what occurs during the pathway maintenance, one thing is you're trying to identify any inefficiencies that there might be. So as this process took place last spring, we noticed that in two pathways, information, support, and services. Is my time up? Great. There you go. So information and support services. We noticed that every course taught in that pathway was also being taught in at least two or three other pathways that we have. So in terms of inefficiencies, you don't want to have to continue to analyze a pathway if the kids can still have every opportunity through a couple other pathways. So our kids do pick up those courses in computer programming as well as network systems. The other that went away, and this may be a shock and please don't get upset in our, in where we are, but aviation production. We recognized in that, that all of those courses were taught in either the aviation maintenance pathway, construction pathway, or manufacturing. So I want to stress, absolutely no opportunities have been taken away from kids. So any credentials that were associated with those two pathways are still there. It's just a, an efficiency issue there. So, I think if you were to add all those numbers up, this simply shows the enrollment in pathway courses. It's probably just south of 16,000 or around there. So that's really, that doesn't mean that there's 16,000 students that have enrolled in those. Kids could obviously enroll in multiple courses, so. But that, that's just really exciting to me to see that. So how is it measured? In 2021, it's my understanding, probably Superintendent Beilefield and some others, created a dashboard to try to track this information. So what that original dashboard looked like was this. So across the top, you have the four MVAs. And then you had a little dial or speedometer there showing where we were at that point. Down below, you just had some additional information. So, Dr. Hatfield indicated there are some changes. This is one that I have felt was important and I made, so I apologize to the superintendent, so. We can go back. It's one button on my computer. So what I wanted the new dashboard to do, as more people gain access to it and are able to look at it, I wanted to really focus on what our goal is. And if the goal is truly students having one MVA, 70% of them, I think that should be absolutely at the center focal point of the dashboard. So what you see in our new one here is that. That dial in the center simply shows, and please note that that indicates, as of last year, we're just about at 50% of the kids. So we've got two years. I think we're going to make it. As we look at these other areas where we may be under-reporting things, I think we're a lot closer than that. So, we did want to also then keep the four MVAs on the perimeter. Notice that the little green band, I had that removed. In talking to a few people just early, and just keep in mind, it's still double digits, my days on the job here, people thought that that indicated they had to get into that green band within each one of those MVAs. So again, wanted to try to eliminate some of the confusion, so. So that's what we're working, we're going to work with going forward. I won't go into too much detail because I don't want to steal your thunder either for coming up. But there are new graduation requirements forthcoming. And one of those is going to be something beyond. And they're going to require two, basically, MVAs. Basically, the state's recommending that. So again, you folks are so far ahead of the game. I can't tell you how, with what is already in place, this is, this isn't going to be a far reach at all for us. So, but one thing that will probably happen, one example of an MVA is engagement, where they may consider participation in extracurricular activities. And I will tell you, students that participate or are part of a team or an organization, there, I would argue with many people, there are greater lessons learned there perhaps than in an academic situation. So, what I anticipate is a new gear showing up. So, notice how it is not connected yet, but. So, with that being said, there have been a couple other changes within the world of CTE. We brought on a new position. We have a principal now at both of the manufacturing and the health Future Ready Centers. His name is Eric Shipman. He is a go-getter. He is all about trying to increase the enrollment at both of those facilities. So he's doing a fantastic job. And I would be happy to try to answer some questions. Keep in mind, I may not have the history, but I have two people here that are, I think, qualified to help me out, so.
Stan?
Thank you. And Tim, welcome to the district. Always grateful when we get a talented person such as yourself to join the team.
Thank you.
We'll continue that effort. We'll continue rating our neighbors for the top talent.
I know a few people, so.
I, we recently had, I'm glad you brought up the Future Ready Centers. We recently had the Secretary and the Deputy Secretary of the Department of Education visit Kansas. The Secretary visited the eastern part of Kansas. We, the Deputy Secretary came to Wichita. Of course, we took him to the Future Ready Center. And I think everyone is very, there was a couple of things I think was very important that I don't know if the public is up to speed yet on. And that is, number one, everyone's familiar with the, we've taken a lot of photo ops by the airplane that's being built there at our manufacturing Future Ready Center. We also have a fairly new Future Ready Center at Wesley Hospital for Healthcare Fields. And how old is that?
Well, really just this year.
Yeah, it's just started this year. And then we have the future for, in the future, we have plans for an IT Future Ready Center. So this is the future of high school graduation and high school education. And it's very exciting and we are ahead. And I think if we keep the foot on the accelerator, we'll stay ahead of the game here. And I think the second thing that I think was really important with the Secretary's visit to our district that was the fact that we are going to make sure that our middle schoolers are exposed to these Future Ready Centers early so that they can get excited and get enrolled as it comes time for them to enter high school. So this is an effort that we are reaching further down than just our high school students now and trying to show what the possibilities are for. And then the third thing I think that was, that we have not done a good enough job of talking about is we are not just cranking out students for our local manufacturing jobs. Everything that we do with our Future Ready Center also gives our students the possibility of future college or concurrent college or college in the future. So it's up to the individual motivation of the student on whether or not they want to just get, I shouldn't just say just, but if they get certified in a skill, there also is opportunities for them to take it to the next level, whether it's a bachelor's or even beyond that. So there is some exciting things going on with our Future Ready Center. And I, I look forward to the Board of Education being able to show off our Healthcare Future Ready Center here real soon. And in the future, we'll be showing off our IT Future Ready Center. So thank you for your efforts in this area. Thank you, Kelly, for your efforts in this area. And I appreciate past boards that were supportive of this. And you're going to see some real, very strong results here very soon in this area of Market Value Assets. So, so thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, I don't know that Eric read the fine print, that it's an ever-ending list of Future Ready Centers. So, there you go. One thing that I, I should have mentioned this during the ZELLO discussion. It's very difficult and I have tried never to ask a kid, what do you want to do? That's, man, talk about high pressure. That's, man, talk about high pressure. I rather couch it, I ask them, what do you like to do? Because if we can identify that, and if we can provide opportunities for them to do the things that they like, man, usually it all falls in place, and they end up doing what they want.
Which is why it's so important to start exposing our middle schoolers to these future ready centers to build, they may see something that hadn't even occurred to them yet.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
Hazel?
First of all, there's a couple of slides that I'd really like to be able to read. The Zelo, it's impossible, I can't, no matter how hard I try, I cannot see it. So where can I see these?
I could send this exact to you, or it looks like Dr. Hatfield has a better idea.
Yeah, it's the Zelo one, and it's the KSTE, just the, they're just.
Would you like us to print them as full-page slides?
That would be great.
And then give them to Patrick, just in this instance, so it's a little easier to see?
That would be great.
So, we actually already have the presentation up there, so in the file, so if we can just make that file into, thank you, that'd be great.
Okay, I'm not finished.
No, go ahead.
So I also would like to welcome you to the district.
Thank you.
I do have a question, where you were talking about 25 pathways, or we reduced from 27 to 25, although they have been included in other areas. But what I'm wondering is, you've taken none away, you've added them, but does it reduce the number of opportunities for, that are available in the students? Because I know there's only so many slots in each, in each pathway.
Right, and that, that's an excellent question, and I could understand how you would inquire about that. It is, at this point, none of those courses are completely full, or where there's a waiting list. So no student is being denied because of unavailable opportunity or seats.
So we didn't reduce any, any seats?
Right.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for, that's very important to clarify, too.
Diane?
Okay, I have a few questions. Thank you. So we're talking about pathways, and then we've also discussed future ready centers. Could we create a distinction for people who are not familiar with either, and make sure that there's clarity there?
Yes, thank you. The future ready centers, a lot of the equipment involved in the manufacturing future ready center is extremely expensive. And it's, again, I'll use the word efficiency, it makes far more sense to concentrate those resources in perhaps one space and bring the students to that space versus trying to replicate those programs at seven, eight different high schools across the district. So, transportation, we do. If you're a student at West and you want to attend the, the manufacturing FRC, we have transportation arranged to get you there. It's my understanding, there's been a tremendous movement in trying to align schedules at the various high schools across the district. I'm going to tell you, and I hope that as, as a new person, too, that there's still tremendous work that could be done there that is going to benefit kids if we can get that. I think that's probably going to be the drum that I'm going to beat a lot. So it's really difficult to try to get kids to, if the bell schedules don't align, so. And that, that transportation is not only to the manufacturing, but it's also to the, to the health and future, whatever those will be, so.
Very good. And then also, I know Superintendent Billifield has made a standard open house for the future ready center for at least the manufacturing location, and so I've got the information here. If people would like to enter into the future ready center to take a tour for it, it's actually the old Dylan's building right across the street from North High School, and we have dedicated on, let's see if I can read this, the first and third Wednesdays of every month between 2:00 and 3:00 PM, and people do not have to register, they don't have to, to pre-enroll or anything, they can just pop in, and we'll give them a tour of the future ready center, so that way they can see the great things that are going on there, they can see the airplane being built, they can see the 3D printers, the laser engravers, the forklift simulators, all the different things that we have going on in that building, because it is quite impressive, and you, you really don't quite understand the, the grandeur of that endeavor until you walk into that facility.
Yeah, I didn't, as I said, I was blown away when I walked in, it's like, holy cow.
There's a lot of cool stuff in there for students to explore and try on. So I do have one more question on the work-based learning courses on slide 10. You stated that we've got 82 partner organizations that students can participate in. Is there a list of organizations that people could see, the local businesses that are participants?
Carrie Keller is responsible for work-based learning in our, in our office, and she absolutely could produce that list if you would like, and I believe it's, I'm not certain if it's on the website at this time, and I think we would have to get permission from those, those businesses to do so, but if you want to.
The students can see it, so it, we put in a system called Transio, that's now something else. They changed the name, but, so the students can see, they log in through their school email, and they can see different internship opportunities, so it's not public-facing.
Okay.
But we could provide you guys the list if you're, if you want.
Will students have access to it?
Yeah.
And my next question, and final question would be, if you're a parent of a high school student, where do you go to get more information, either about the pathways or the future ready centers? If, if they're hearing this for the first time, and they've got a ninth grade student that just entered into high school, where do they go for more information about this?
If I may, can I answer, where do kids find out, too?
That was going to be my next question.
As we've talked about, I'm sorry, well, there we go. So I anticipated it. So important for those eighth graders to know what the opportunities are. So actually today, we just had a professional organization come to the district, and they are creating videos about 13 of our pathways. This was all funded through the Perkins Grant. These are, are high, high, high-quality videos, and they, rather than hearing some old guy like me talk about it, these are kids that are giving their testimonials, if you will, about the pathways. The mission, or what we hope to use those for, is to take those to pre-enrollment in the spring, so that the eighth grade counselors or the high school counselors that go down can actually have this to show the kids. I mean, you can read about it, you can see static photos, but actually seeing a kid work with rainbow pasta or things of that nature can really spark their interest. So those, it is my expectation and anticipation that those would be available on the website as well, when they're done. I am also not fully familiar with what opportunities or methods I have at my disposal to communicate directly with parents in the district. So I would, there's no reason that the link could not be sent to all eighth grade or ninth grade parents with those videos. So, those are ideas, I don't know how realistic they are yet, but that's, that's, that is one way. Then obviously, I think the CTSOs, those are the career tech student organizations, those kids are by far and away the best ambassadors for those programs. And so if we can give them opportunities to talk to others and maybe even peers at their high school currently, I think that's another avenue that we need to explore, so.
And when can we expect to see those videos?
They are shooting all of this week. You may have a little more.
November, maybe?
Did you say November?
Four to six weeks after they take them.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the, I would add, the, the CTE page of the district website is a wealth of information that you may or may not get lost in, because there's so much great information there. So, when in doubt, go, go check out that, that part of the webpage, there's some pretty substantially, there's some great stuff in there.
And one last thing, and I may have to ask our superintendent to kind of give me a little more detail on it, but Road Trip Nation, I believe we have the premiere, that's a documentary basically, that has been produced, and it's about ready to be unveiled, and so we're excited about that. It should really show off this region, so.
So, there was a board presentation on that about a year ago, and it'll be on PBS at the end of the month. So it'll, it's finally here, the hour-long documentary will be, will be airing, and we're going to have a premiere showing at Exploration Place, and fun stuff. We are tututhing, as much as we can.
And if it's a great tutu, it's my office's fault. If it's a foreborn, it's Kelly's.
I have one last question, and, and it'll be quickly. You gave us two additional handouts. One is the pathways by school availability, and the other is the, just the list of the pathways. And, and in the discussion of informing parents, I know these are on our website.
Right.
But are they included in packets for ninth graders as they enroll into high school, along with an explanation of what pathways are?
I cannot say as to, if that has been the case, but I see no reason that it cannot be.
Well, it just, I think the more we can get to parents, the earlier we can get to parents, the more likelihood we are of having kids begin to choose a pathway.
I'm a firm believer, you got to be intentional. You, you can put stuff on a website, but people have to go to that website, so.
Yeah, the more they can get it in their hands to look at it, even if they, even if 10% of them do something with it, it's probably worth the paper it's printed on.
Sure, could I add a couple of last things? Great job, good improvement to the dashboard. I did want to say that I was digging into the data while I was sitting here a little bit, and the call it, the concurrent credit information is important, because it goes back, it ties back to what we were talking about with summer school, too. And money is a barrier for some of our kids. And so, we have excellent CTE classes that are the tech ed tuition that we do primarily through WSU Tech. So last year, we had 779 possibilities, so we, we track it, a student is in the class, and so they could get credit if they pass the class. So out of 779, 684, so the majority got tuition, or got credit in the free classes. In the paid classes, we had 2,304 students eligible, we had 525 actually get the credit. Now, some of those might have failed the class, or failed the college opportunity, but my gut tells me the majority of those kids, if they would have the money, would have paid for the credit and would have had that opportunity. So, we think about barriers a lot, and we think about how do we, how do we provide transportation, how do we allow access to all the future ready centers for all the kids across the district? And I think this is an example, and something we, we have been talking about through the foundation, or through the Legacy Fund, how do we do this? A good example is with the EMT class, we offered to pay for the test for all the kids that were in EMT last year. It's over $100, they're not sure if they're going to pass it or not, so a lot of kids are like, well, I don't want to, I don't want to blow 100 bucks if I don't know if I'm going to pass it. We said, we want you to take it if your teacher thinks you're ready. We had nine out of 10 kids pass the EMT test. So our kids are able, they're capable, they can do it, it's just sometimes the, the fear of money, that I don't want to pay the money if there's a chance that, you know, mom and dad need that money, or our family needs that money, but if, if I'm not going to pass the class, I don't want to take that risk. So, we want to try to continue as a district to alleviate that. Not that we can do free tuition for every kid all the time, but we can do some targeted things with families and kids to really make them believe I can do college, I can do this if, if that's what I want to do as far as my individual plan goes. So, I just want to throw that out there.
Thank you.
I think that data is pretty, pretty eye-opening to me, and it's great data, in a way, because we have great opportunities for kids. So, I also wanted to mention that Marissa, the Supersat girl from North High, she went to National HOSA this summer and competed, we could have another good news item for her later on, but her and some people, some of the kids from North High, that's one of those opportunities, I think a great ambassador for the biomed program here, so. She needs to tutu her horn, too.
We have lots of horns tonight, so, thank you very much for, for your presentation, we appreciate it.
Lots of horns.
Okay, next item?
Next item, consent?
Kathy, do you have anything to pull from the consent agenda?
Just D2.
Prime fit. Julie?
Nothing to pull.
Stable. Hazel?
I'm stable.
It's been a long night.
I have nothing to pull.
Diane?
I have nothing to pull.
And I have nothing to pull.
Stan?
No consent items to pull.
Ernestine?
Nothing to pull on consent.
Okay, do I hear a motion to accept the rest of the agenda, except for D2?
I'll make a motion to accept the rest. Agenda.
Second.
Okay, the consent agenda has been a motion by Kathy and a second by Julie. Please cast your vote. Motion passes 7-0. Kathy with the prime fit, D2.
Thank you. I spoke with Prime Fit about this, and they shared with me that there's been additional schools that have decided to want to opt in using their Title I resources. And I think, Susan, you've been in contact with them, too, I thought she said, okay, anyway. I, this recommendation that we're being asked to, to accept, there's three words that I wondered if I could make a motion to change, and that because there's been additional schools, there might be additional funds that they might need, and so instead of saying not to exceed, could we just say provide tutoring services in an amount of $75,000 instead of not to exceed?
I, I think, just, I don't know about the new schools, but if there are several of them, it could go over our $20,000 limit, and then we have to vote on it with this, just like we're doing tonight. So this is to pay for these schools. If additional schools are coming in, we would just simply get another agenda item that would help us with that.
So even though it says not to exceed, we can override that?
We can override that with another, it, once that's decided, the money is determined how much they would be using out of their school funds, then it would come back to us.
I guess the revision was missed, and it was too late, because this had already gone to print, so.
I, I'm not sure why, but, yeah, I think we'll correct that in the future if we need to.
Okay, so that is separate from this recommendation right here?
Right, because these schools, we've already got all the paperwork done on them.
Right.
And, and if there's going to be additional ones, that same work would be done, and then it'd be brought back to us again.
So it could exceed $75,000?
Not for these, not for these schools.
Not for these schools, but for the additional schools.
Yeah, the additional schools would be an addition.
There would be additional item with additional funds. Okay, great, I would like to make a motion to accept.
I think that's right, isn't it?
D2, prime fit.
Okay, I'm sorry, did you make a motion?
I made a motion to accept it.
Okay. Moved by Kathy, seconded by Ernestine, that we accept this D2 prime fit. Please cast your vote. Motion passes 7-0. Next item.
Next item. Policy, first review, proposed updates of transportation policies.
Okay, and we were all sent these policies, so we've had a chance to look through them. This is a first read, and we will be not voting tonight, but the next time the board meets, we would bring it back for a second read to vote on it. But are there any questions or things that you'd like for clarification, so that the administration can bring that back to us? I'm not seeing any, so it is a first read, we will just move it to the next meeting for the second read. Next item.
Next item, under miscellaneous, superintendent's report.
All right, thank you, Patrick. Just have a couple of things I wanted to share. First off, today's Patriot Day, and just want to lift that up as a, as a day of remembrance and service. I, I wrote a little bit about that last week, and did a special little project, and thanks to Jennifer and Michael and the team to make this happen very quickly last week, but a special project with the Iron Titan Brigade at South High, and about flag displays and how to display a flag in the classroom. So, the idea actually came from a patron who had watched one of our videos and said, hey, just so you know, I saw something in the background that looks like it wasn't quite right. I am not a flag expert, so I had, the kids teach me how to do that. So it was a, a good little video we made. Stan already talked quite a bit about Deputy Secretary Cindy Martin coming. I wanted to just thank the staff at Jackson, the staff at the future ready center, first student for sending a bus, it was super cool. She was so impressed, the bus was air-conditioned, she could not believe, she was anticipating a non-air-conditioned bus, so. It was, it was a great day. She might have just been being, you know, kind, but she was just gushing about what she saw. I mean, she said this is an exemplary model of what all schools and districts can do across the nation with what we do at the future ready center, how we've invested extra money in a way that will be sustainable, so. She was very, very excited about what she saw in Wichita, so. Proud to get some recognition on the national level. Couple other things, fall sports are underway, so our tennis players, cross-country football, volleyball, cheer, dance, esports, and soccer are. volleyball, cheer, dance, esports, and soccer are all underway and working hard. So I was able to spend some time at the Titan Classic and watch some soccer, been to some cross-country. Also was able to visit Caldwell Allen Dodge Black and OK, as some of my school visits stops. Coming up this Saturday, the 16th, the National Arts and Education Week, so at the Wichita Art Museum, we have from 10 to 3 performances going on for the district. We are to the stage now with the vision and mission work done, that our listening sessions will be going on in about two weeks, so Wendy's team has been doing a great job of getting all the invites out and proctoring all of that. And we're also looking for feedback about the website. So if you've been to our website recently, you notice the first thing that pops up is give us some feedback about the website, so encourage everyone to do that. I think it's proof tonight, and what Tim and Lauren had presented, how important that is as a, as a landing spot for the great things we're doing. So it's important with this new refresh of the website, we get it right, so. That's all I have. Thank you.
Next item?
Next item, Board of Education report and requests.
Kathy?
Well, I attended the first game for Northwest High School, the Varsity, with Bishop Carroll, and the Grizzlies slammed Bishop Carroll, sorry about that, but it was good, go Grizzlies! Yes, it was a very exciting game, because it was not expected to happen, as history tells us. I would like to, on a somber note, lift up the family of Linda Gregory, who is a photographer for Northwest High School, and at the Varsity game on, we could go tonight, she passed away just past Friday as a result of falling backwards and hitting her head on the sideline of the football field. And I would like USD 259 to, to recognize Linda, and I did not know her, but I have read a lot about her, and how the community, as well as her family, will miss her tremendously. And I would like the Gregory family to know that the district is thinking about the family. And I volunteered at the Kansas State Fair yesterday and ate too much bad food, that's it.
Julie?
I have no reporter requests, but I would, Superintendent Beilefeld, just like to have some clarification regarding the strategic planning sessions. You said invitations are going out. Can you give us information about the open session that anyone can attend, and also some clarification about potential involvement for board members?
So, I don't, open session is, I don't know off the top of my head.
Tuesday at 4.
Tuesday at 4.
Spanish-speaking session.
Okay, Spanish-speaking session?
Tuesday at 6. English-speaking, but translators and Spanish-based.
Okay.
Both in the evening, 13 a.m.
Okay, these are at the AMAC Building, all of our listening sessions are at AMAC. The, the open sessions are Tuesday at 4, the Spanish, for Spanish-speaking individuals, and then Tuesday at 6, open to, to everyone, so. Oh, I'm sorry, the 19th, September 19th. So a week, next week.
So those, so the open sessions would be the ones that board members would attend?
Yes, and then I do think Wendy sent some, an opportunity for you to invite parents, and I don't know where all that stands.
Yeah, we got those, yeah.
Okay, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Hazel?
Yes, I had the opportunity to, this morning, attend a Patriots' Day celebration at the Kansas Firefighters Museum, where Hamilton Middle School, JROTC, did the opening flag ceremony, and the choir sang for us, and we had a real nice speech by the president of the fire museum, and it was very enjoyable and, and very nice.
Diane?
In the rain.
I, I also attended the, to see the Hamilton Middle School, JROTC color guard present the colors this morning at the firefighter museum in, in a remembrance ceremony for the September 11th attacks, just to give honor to the firefighters that, and first responders that rushed into the World Trade Center towers and everywhere else on that day. And so I have a little special connection, because I will give a shout-out to my dad, who is also a retired fire captain for the Cedric County Fire Department, so I have a close connection to the firefighters, so.
Thank you. Stan?
No board report or request.
Ernestine?
I was going to wax poetic about the visit from the Assistant Secretary, but you already said it beautifully, and that was something impressive, and she really was impressed. It was not just that she was buttering us up, she really was impressed. The, the other thing, we have wonderful volunteers in our schools, amazing volunteers, and I was able this week to give a special thank you to a woman named Jean Galbert, who volunteers seven days a week, and has been doing it for 17 years. She's at Clark Elementary, and I just think that what we would be is lost without our volunteers. And it's not just the skills that they can do with the kids, but as she points out, she says, they call her grandma, she's like a grandma to those kids. And she said, I have 500 grandchildren, so, thanks.
Well, I, I know all of us have been out in buildings as the school year started, and I am very impressed with how our year has started off this year, because our teachers are teaching right from the first day, and the kids are learning, and great things are going on, I have great hope for this school year. And I, too, was at the meeting with Cindy Martin from the State Department in Washington, DC, and I was impressed, and believe me, she was impressed. I think it shows Wichita's doing great things, and we've shown it nationally now, that's a neat thing. I will continue to go out into buildings as I, as the year progresses, because it's just fun to get out there. Next item, please.
Next item, new business?
I'm seeing none, next item?
Next item, executive session?
Diane?
I moved the board recess into an executive session to discuss an employee's performance evaluation pursuant to the Kansas Open Meetings Act exemption requiring, regarding matters relating to non-elected personnel, and the board return from executive session to this room at 9:10 p.m.
There is a motion by Diane, is there a second?
I second it.
Kathy seconded it, please pass your, cast your vote for executive session. Motion passes 7-0, we are in executive session. Next item?
Next item, adjournment?
Do I hear?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I second it. Kathy made the motion to adjourn, Cheryl seconded it, please cast your vote. Motion passes 6-0. We will see you next month.